We'll call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the March 15, 2012, Upshur County Commission Regular Meeting.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, March 15, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tanny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tanny Commissioner, Creed Plecher Commissioner, J.C. Rapperty Commissioner, William Parker Administrator, and Jacqueline Denklofer Secretary. Meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Plecher seconded by J.C. Rapperty, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of March 8, 2012 as submitted. Matthew A. Kerner, Opportunity House Incorporated Executive Director, appeared before the Commission and provided an overview of programs and statistics and requested funding for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. No action was taken. The Commission will review the request and consider during budget meetings. Alicia Rapking, Parish House Cross Lines Director, appeared before the Commission and provided an overview of programs and statistics and requested funding for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. No action was taken. The Commission will review the request and consider during budget meetings. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty seconded by Creed Plecher, the Commission approved Sierra Nicole Walters and Crystal Jane Briscoe as volunteers for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. The Commission recessed at 9:50 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 10:15 a.m. After discussion on motion by Creed Plecher seconded by J.C. Rapperty, the Commission approved the employment of Erin Harris as part-time monitor for the Tri-County Child Exchange Invisitation Program. Effective date of employment is March 15, 2012, at the rate of 7:55 per hour. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rapperty seconded by Creed Plecher, the Commission approved the poll workers for the May primary election as submitted. The Commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence to Mr. James Giannato, Director, West Virginia Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, from Senator John D. Rockefeller IV concerning the addition of a full-time staff person and a part-time staff person to the Charleston Office of the United States Postal Service to aid in the updating of 911 address conversions. Number two, agendas and notice of meetings as listed. Number three, meeting minutes and financial reports as listed. Number four, board meetings. Number five, budget meetings. Number six, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following requests to attend meetings as listed. Helen R. Phillips, Upshur County Assessor, met with the Commission and reviewed budget information. The Commission recessed at 12:00 p.m. The Commission reconvened at 1:45 p.m. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rapperty seconded by Creed Plecher, the Commission meeting adjourned at 2:00 p.m.
There's no corrections or additions. I'd ask for a motion that must be approved as read.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Okay. We have with us today Micah Hitt Harris, Director, Case Manager for Community Corrections Center. Would you like to step up to the podium?
I'm here today to introduce our proposed new hire, Michelle Posey. She would be our Lewis County Case Manager. We just did interviews a couple weeks ago and the Board recommended her and we got that approved early this week, so I'd like to bring her up here if you guys have any questions.
All right. Bring her up here and let her give us her history. Tell us a little bit about yourself and where you come from and where you're going.
My name's Michelle Posey. Born and raised in Lewis County. Graduated Lewis County High School and attended Glenville State College. Graduated from there in 2001 with a bachelor's degree in behavioral science, minor in criminal justice. Past 10 years I've been working with community agencies. Since 2003 I've been employed with Appalachian Community Health Center. I work in a 24/7 crisis emissions unit, so I'm looking forward to this change and working closer to home.
What capacity were you with Appalachian mental health?
What was that?
What capacity were you with? What did you do with it?
A little bit of anything and everything, linkage, mental hygiene, consults, referrals for acute care, referrals for rehab, anything considered a crisis situation.
So you've dealt with people previously that have issues, so to speak?
Right.
Feel comfortable in that environment?
Anywhere from as young as three up to 100. People with the old diagnosis like mental illness, addiction, MRDD, people with probation, parole, also would go up to Tiger Valley Regional Jail and meet with inmates, people on holding cells and set them up to see the psychiatrist.
Appears you're well qualified.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question based on your experience. You know, there's a dilemma in the state of West Virginia and the legislature even looked at the possibility of building another regional jail because the existing jails are crowded. There's the issue of how to deal with incarceration versus rehabilitation. So if you were in charge of this whole program of incarceration rehabilitation, what would you do? What do you think would be the best thing to do to help solve the problem that we have?
I think that we're already on a good foot, such as the Community Corrections Program. It offers services, you know, linkage, social work, you know, parenting classes, anger management, helping people find jobs. I think that's already a good foot, you know, on that step. Towards that, there is overcrowding in the jail and I saw a lot of inmates that were in need of psychiatric services and maybe rehabilitation, you know, for drugs or even vocation, rehabilitation. So maybe we can help implement more programs like that, so to help decrease the crowding and also they don't end up in that situation again. Because a lot of them come back out, they relapse, they can't find jobs. So I think the Community Corrections Programs are real.
That's a good start.
Yeah.
All right. Good answer. Okay. Well, welcome aboard and it sounds like you're going to be very well suited for the position you're going to take.
Thank you.
So we'll, and we have one other issue, but do we have a motion then that we approve the employment of Michelle at the rate of 10:50 per hour? Date of employment, April the 2nd, 2012?
Same lady?
No.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Okay. Now we're going to talk about the grant for FY 1213.
Yes, we are, and I will hand you guys. Just give each of you one. I'll give Willie one down here. This is just what I have figured as of, as of today, just magistrate referrals alone that we've gotten since July 1, just an approximate about what we've saved the county, which totals to be a little over $100,000 since July 1. Like I said, that's strictly magistrate clients that we've got. That's not circuit court or our probation or parole referrals. But I just thought that that'd be a good introduction into, you know, the grant and how it helps save a little money, so.
That's July 1 to date?
Yes. Yeah, you can see down at the very bottom, client R, he's only been on the program three days, so that's why he's only saved, we've only saved $146 with him, but yep, to date, as of today.
Are there any suggestions that you would have as far as, are there more people that could be taking advantage of this system if the magistrate put more people on or what's your thoughts there?
I think, yeah, our, we can hold, I mean, we can serve a lot of people over there with a lot of different, you know, as Michelle was saying, parenting, substance abuse classes, you know, anything like that. I feel that the more the merrier, the more referrals we get, the more people we're able to help and hopefully deter from jail. So I'm always begging for referrals because that's, you know, not only saving money, we're potentially, you know, we're helping them, so.
Now, there was a request that I made to your predecessor. He worked on it some, but I'm not sure to what extent, and that was to look at the regional jail bill, look at what people were in there for, the whole process, and see if there are those in there that would be fit for your program. And, you know, there's some people that just need to be in the regional jail.
Right.
But it's like, as has been said, we need to put people in jail because we're afraid of them, not because we're mad at them.
Yeah.
So I would further ask you the same thing, that if you would look on a monthly basis at the people that are in the regional jail and are there people in there that would be fit for your program, would be fitted for that program, and how many? So we could see if there are potential savings, then maybe we could address what we need to do to get more people involved in your program instead of sitting in the regional jail with no rehabilitation. Well, I guess maybe there's a little bit in the regional jail, but not any ways near the, what's available for them through the Community Corrections Program.
Right. And, you know, kind of following up to the first question you asked me, I think people that have been convicted of domestics, DUIs, they're prime candidates for our program because we offer the BIPs class over there, that's the 32-week intervention course. So people that have been convicted of domestics, DUI, we have a DUI awareness class, you know, getting those people out of jail and putting them in a program like ours, you know, they can really benefit from the things we have to offer. Now, where would I obtain those records of?
Well, where would they be available that she could look at the records as far as?
I can get, I'll get her on the email list. Just give me your email for regional jail that invoice that comes out monthly.
Okay.
And then the backup records would need to be in the circuit clerk's office or the magistrate clerk's office, I would assume, for the case.
And there might be extenuating, there might be someone looks like, well, they need to be out of regional jail, but there might be extenuating circumstances. So if you have access to all the information that the magistrate has available, then you can, you can make an attempt.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, I'll definitely look at that. I'm not sure how harsh she got on it, but I'll.
Well, she said she had an intern working on it or someone?
He lost it. His computer was stolen.
I hope it wasn't somebody on the, on the dime that stole his computer.
I think he was on.
He was on vacation.
Vacation or spring break or something and someone stole his computer, had all the information in it.
That's why they always say, always do a backup.
Yes.
Always do a backup, so.
Yeah. And what I'm here for today is, you know, to hopefully get our grant approved. And in there, we're asking for a little bit more money this year from, from them because we had put in for, our Board had suggested that we put in for some salary increases for our staff because as of recently, we were one of the lowest-paid day report centers in the state of West Virginia. And we also wanted to increase our contractual counseling services so we can better offer the domestics, the DUIs. So we had put an increase in there for that. But other than that, everything pretty much has stayed the same. But it's that time again where we come begging for money from everybody, so.
You're funded by three counties that make a commitment to.
Yes.
Provide funding for you. And they've made those commitments. I know one county in particular has been, I don't want to say, choose my words closely here. I want to use the word derelict, but I'll say, I'll say, we'll be in return.
Bashful.
But they, but recently there was a board meeting and there was a meeting and they have indicated they will cut those funds loose.
Yes.
So.
And, you know, Lewis County, they've already, they've already crossed their t's and dotted their i's with their money, so we've received that. It's just that other county that we're, we're waiting on to get our money, so.
Our county's investment, I think by just a rough calculation, savings that we receive through the day report center is about two for one. So for every dollar we spend, we save $2. And I think that's important. Not too much in government can equal that, so.
Right.
I think it's money well spent. This program has been consistently one of the pearls, I think, of county government. Wish you the success, continued success.
Yeah, we have, I mean, with all the other day report centers, our day report center here is really looked upon, you know, as kind of a role model because, you know, we're usually two steps ahead of everybody else here. And that's why I'd really like to see our referrals increase and I'd like to start offering more services and I'd like to just see us continue to grow, so.
Those savings to the county certainly, if you're successful in your mission, I mean, to improve the lives of people that have, you know, run afoul of law in some minor areas, but you can do that and save money for the county in the long run. That's important.
Win-win situation.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Well, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'll look through the brand. Everything is in place as it relates to us just being the fiscal agent, you know, and recommend approval.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, not unless you guys have anything for me.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we approve as presented?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Keep up the good work and keep us informed on your project there as far as more savings.
All right.
As being director, has being director met all your expectations or is it a little overwhelming here? You've only been on the job about a month and a half now.
It's getting easier every day, but I feel that I've been bugging everybody. I've been asking all kinds of questions, but hey, that's the only way I can learn, so.
Right. Once you get over the learning curve, then it's.
Smooth sailing from there.
Smooth sailing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next esteemed guest is Joyce L. Harris Thacker, Chair of Upshur County Solid Waste Authority. Need some help bringing your bags up, Joyce?
I'm ready.
Joyce, a fan on going on trips, you brought your suitcases with you.
You're just involved in almost everything. We might as well set up a seat down here for you. You come into our, testify about various things so often.
Yeah, thank you.
Give you a special chair.
You know, as a former commissioner, I have a tendency to when Donnie asks for a vote to vote and I have to be careful not to do that.
Sometimes we might need a vote, you're right.
Never know.
Well, and as usual, I, I'm making a statement today, so I'll do that here in a minute if you allow me, but I would like to start by saying that I am Joyce Harris Thacker. I'm the Chair for the Upshur County Solid Waste Authority and also the statewide Chair for the West Virginia Association of Solid Waste Authorities. And today I'm here to ask you all to proclaim April, the month of April is Make It Shine Month. But prior to that, yeah, I have something that I want to share with the commissioners in the form of a, of a statement. And yesterday was, and this all, you know, rolls in together as usual, and I am an officer with the Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, as Amanda is as well, Amanda Hayes with Tobacco Delta.
You have many hats.
Many hats and, yes, and I need to talk to the young lady that was just here with Community Corrections because I'm also the team leader for Upshur County Partners in Prevention where we provide parenting classes, safe and sound sleep classes, you know, shaking baby. And I'll talk more about that next week as I come to proclaim child abuse prevention and awareness. Anyway, yesterday was kick butt day and I had a little demonstration. Yes, I will turn these around and I'll bring these up here. Maybe I'll let you.
Yeah, I seen your.
Hold those.
Yes, right.
Oh, oh, sorry.
How's that? They good, Joyce?
Hope you all don't mind I put some.
Are there cigarettes?
Material up here while I'm on your desk.
Stand up.
No, you have to order my table.
I can't.
I'll hold that up there. So that when our.
Black sheep. Have you any more?
Three bags?
Three bags.
Let me do this.
Can you see that now, the chair in the way?
Chair's in the way.
Chair's in the way, Joyce.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We should have got your props up beforehand.
I know, but I didn't want to.
It's when you're one man show, it's hard to do.
Too much as usual.
One woman show.
I scared the press. Back here taking pictures, but as you can see, caution, hazmat bag contains a representation sampling of approximately 64.5 pounds of the 90,945 cigarette butts thrown away every day in Upshur County.
Upshur County?
In Upshur County.
Every day? How many was it? How many pounds?
When you do a county population times 25% smoking rate at 15 cigarettes per day, that's the total cigarette butts that you see there, 90,943 cigarette butts. Contamination.
Ninety?
That, you know.
Filters don't, the filters.
And I wish I'd looked this up as how long it takes for a cigarette butt to biodegrade because I'm really not.
Do that? I mean, it seems like.
Really not sure of that, but that goes into either our landfills or on our ground and into our water system as you all can understand how important it is to, not only, you know, I was thinking, there are no redeeming qualities for a cigarette. None. There isn't. So I'm just going to put that out there, my opinion, and I think it's pretty well based on fact, but, you know, yeah. It's important to not smoke and not to throw your cigarettes. I lost my dad to lung cancer from cigarette smoking, so it's personal to me.
Yeah.
And that was 25 years ago. Anyway, I'll talk a little bit more about Make It Shine Month. That has a relative effect on this wealth. April 2012, Make It Shine Month. Whereas the Upshur County Commission is aware that West Virginians are taking action to work towards the common goal of a clean, safe environment for this and future generations. And whereas one of our most critical objectives must be to reduce the volume of solid waste being generated by our citizens and being disposed of in the landfills. And whereas our legacy as a county, as a state, and as a people rests on our ability to clean up the environment and set the standards for ourselves and future generations, and now therefore be it resolved that the Upshur County Commission does hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Make It Shine Month. The Upshur County Commission urges all citizens to participate in programs that will accomplish these objectives. The Upshur County Commission would encourage participation in the Adopt a Highway and Adopt a Spot programs given under your hand this day. And I would ask that you approve that and then I would like to share some information about some upcoming events.
Motion approved. Proclamation's read.
So moved.
I'll second it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll be having in April at the Recycling Center at Crossroads at Walmart on the 13th and 14th, Friday the 13th and Saturday the 14th, our recycling celebration. That's being sponsored by the Upshur County Solid Waste Authority and the City of Buchanan. And we'd encourage everyone to take their recyclables there every day. That facility is open 24/7 and the recycling center at, on Mudlech for the City of Buchanan is open through the weekend and some hours on Saturday, so.
Ask your question.
I know, you know, I thought about this this morning. Donnie's going to ask me a question that I can't answer. He always does, so.
Now, listen, are there certain items at the recycling center out on the?
Yes, yes.
That they don't take?
That they don't take?
Right.
Well, it might be easier if you ask me what they do take, but I know something that somebody asks all the time.
Name one thing they don't take.
Is how come we don't take glass? Because we used to.
Okay, that would be a question.
And that one, you know, I can't answer. I mean, we do not take glass anymore and we used to. There's not a market for glass. I mean, you know, we market those recyclables through the North Central West Virginia Co-op out of Marion County and glass became so contaminated and dangerous that there isn't a market for that, so we are unable to market glass.
When you say contaminated, how did it become contaminated?
Well, when we used to recycle glass, we had to break it down into colors and it, and then people would throw other things in it. You know, and I've had Creed ask a question, you know, the other day. He had a comment from a constituent asking for recycling receptacle in Rock Cave. Well, years ago, we wrote a grant and we had recycling receptacles, like, you know, the big steel ones like we have out at the recycling center, in every north, south, east, west point of Upshur County and in the city. And they were contaminated so bad by people throwing their trash in that we had to take them out. Absolutely. That's all that, you cannot market, you know, contaminated materials. And we, we find that a lot out at Crossroads and I would encourage people to look at what are the pictures that are on the receptacles, and I know you asked about what, what we can recycle, and we very clearly mark that on the receptacles and invariably, and I'm out there a lot taking my, I will see people putting trash in those receptacles.
You tell them?
We can't. I've actually called the comm center before. And we have cameras out there and if we need to review them, we will. But what's supposed to go in those receptacles and what's supposed to go in there, what we recycle?
But you even have.
What we're able to market. If we're, if it's contaminated to the point that, you know, we can't market it, then it has to be put in the landfill. So, you know, we don't want to do that. We want to continue, you know, the recycling program because it's very important. It's very important. And so I'd encourage people to look at what marked, plastic, you know, pop soda bottles, water bottles, you know, the other plastic one and two, one and two. And we, at the recycling center with the city, I mean, we, every year have students from the fifth grade, all students of the fifth grade to the recycling center. And they can tell you exactly what needs to recycle, be recycled. And they'll tell you, one and two. If it doesn't say one and two on the bottom of that plastic bottle, put it in the trash because we can't recycle it. But anyway.
Has there been anyone cited for putting trash in those bins?
You know, I can't answer that.
So he asked the question, not me.
But I can tell you that, you know, we would encourage folks to call DNR and if they're not a part of their neighborhood litter pickup to do that, or we have Adopt a Spot, Adopt a Highway, a very viable program, but, and I'm here just about every spring and I can tell you, you all will remember, I'm just incensed, you know, it's, we're so excited for spring to come and it's come early this year and to, for everything to start growing and, boy, you know, when that happens, it's a normal winter, the snow has melted, you see the trash all along the highways and it just, it makes me sick, you know. I don't know why people do that and I want to encourage them not to do that, to not trash our community. And those that, you know, can adopt a highway and adopt a spot, for those who have done that, and I wish they wouldn't, that they would do that as well, to clean up their communities, go out, pick up the trash and.
I think that's what's adopted.
There's a good headline for you. Please don't trash our community.
There you go.
There you go.
I see them both writing.
There appears to be popular places too that they, they sit and eat their lunch or something and throw the trash out and leave. Be nice if someone put some cameras up there, those popular disposal sites.
Yeah, I think that.
And we can do that.
I think that there needs to be some grant money that goes, I mean, how long, how long has Adopt a Highway program been in place? Many, many years, right?
Many years.
Recycling's been in place many, many years. Mandatory trash pickup has been in place many, many years. What I think they start, need to start doing is they need to start giving grant money to communities. They want to give grant money to buy cameras to put up in areas and get about 500 cameras and put them up all over Upshur County in such a manner that when someone throws a cigarette butt out or in some cases a whole bag of garbage. in such a manner that when someone throws a cigarette butt out, or in some cases, a whole bag of garbage, or, you know, their McDonald's wrapper or a beer bottle, I mean, I, my property joins Thomas Road. And every spring before I start mowing, I have to go pick up a bushel or more of beer bottles mainly, whiskey bottles, that people throw, just drive along and throw right down over the road bank. That's where they need to spend their money is enforcement.
And I can tell you, Donnie, that every association that is a member of the West Virginia Association of Solid Waste Authorities do have a camera. And many of them have written grants. We have here in Upshur County. Written grants and have signage. We've had signage and a camera that we put throughout the county, so you never know where it's going to show up. But I can tell you that there is camera. There are cameras at the Crossroads Recycling Center that we can view at any time. But I mean, I agree with you, and DNR provides grant opportunities which we here in Upshur County participate in almost every time. The Solid Waste Management Board, I can't remember when we haven't applied for grant funds through the Solid Waste Management Board as well. And, you know, every year that may look a little bit differently. A lot of times it's for, you know, marketing pieces and different things that we participate in. It could be for sending the kids to conservation camp, and we do that. There's a lot of avenues where, that we provide, you know, opportunities for people to be more public aware. Especially, we like to target the children.
As with most antisocial acts, I guess you defined littering to an extent that sometime it occurs as antisocial. As with most acts of that nature, I'd say the people that do it have low self-esteem. They do not recognize their personal responsibility or their obligation to their neighbors or their community. And it's probably a very small, select percentage of people in the county that engage in that conduct. I'd say by far, we're the last, and certainly in my adult life, people have taken recycling, people have taken cleaning the highways much more responsibly now than they did, say, nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, when I was, you know, a young adult or coming of age. So it is, like anything else, a problem that's created by a small percentage of people who really probably have no respect for themselves.
Right.
Because how can you have respect for yourself if you engage in that type of conduct?
Right. And I'd agree with that.
Well, I would disagree with one aspect of that, respectfully disagree. I think it's just as bad or worse than it's ever been, it's probably worse than it ever has been. If it wasn't for all the groups that adopt the highway and adopt these sections, it's hard to tell what our highways would look like. And it may be, it may be a few number of people, but they're scattered all over Upshur County because there's not a highway. I don't care if it's a dirt road, a gravel road, a county route, whatever it is, there's trash everywhere. And if it wasn't for these groups that picked them up on a continual basis, it would be the trashiest county that, probably in the state of West Virginia. It's because of the few people that do pick them up that makes it look as good as it is. That's why I say there's sometimes, and I think this is the case, where the only way to deal with those people is enforcement. Because, and I agree, you should educate the youth, that's the ideal place to educate the youth. But if those kids are, if those kids are riding down the road with their parents and they get a finished drink in the beer bottle or eating that McDonald's burger or Hardee's, I won't be biased where they're fast food places. But if those kids are riding in the back and mom and dad throws it out the window, they'll probably say, you shouldn't do that, Dad or Mom. But the next time they're gonna do it. And there's sometimes, the only way to stop people is through enforcement.
Right.
And I think this is one of those cases.
There are some counties who have litter control officers, but, you know, and I'll just, I'll put this out here, and probably need to research it a little bit better, but most of those are probably counties that have landfills. There's more monies that go into landfills for tipping fees than to the counties that don't. We have transfer station, we don't have landfill. And, you know, the likelihood of having the funding to be able to hire a litter control officer is just not, it's just not feasible. It's just not there. And you can't write a grant for something like that ongoing.
Well, why don't you do some checking and see how many cameras we have and how many tickets have been written as a result of using those cameras? It'd be interesting to know. Because I don't think we have enough cameras, and I'm sure there's not enough tickets written.
Behavior won't change without consequences.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
That's why, that's why people complain about their taxes, their taxes when their dollar amount ticket comes out. Not when their first ticket comes out that just tells what their property values are. It's when their bill comes out that they realize how much the dollars and cents is gonna be. Or when people are speeding and they stop and get a ticket and it's three hundred bucks, that's when they realize they probably shouldn't have been speeding.
Well, and you know that we have law, I mean, law enforcement, they can write tickets for littering. But, you know, they have so many other things that they need to be doing, you know. Unfortunately, they can't be out there, you know, writing tickets for that unless they happen to see it, and I'm sure that they would. But, you know, that's limited as everything else that everybody needs to have, to be able to do and can't do. I mean, there's not enough time, not enough hours in the day. But now I agree with Jay, you know, that it just seems that there's a lot of, you know, I don't care. And toss it out the window, the trash. And it's very upsetting, and as you can see, and make the correlation here between the litter and the cigarette butts. I mean, that's just one item, because as we drive down our highways, we see just multiple, all kinds of stuff. And it's sad, it's heartbreaking. I'd encourage people to not litter and to clean up what they see.
Anyone who's been out on the Adopt a Highway journey up and down the roads
Yeah.
quickly recognizes the extent of litter and the extent of cigarette butts littering the highway.
They're hard to pick up, too.
Yeah, they are. So I want to leave with you all some magnets that have the what's recycled through the city and the schedule for, if you live in the city, for the curbside pickup that takes place the first and third Tuesdays of every month. And the brochures give you that information as well, some recycling bags. That's another thing, when you go to the grocery store, you know, it's to buy what's been recycled. Use your bags to do that. And so I have some pencils that were made out of denim and money, as you can see the green. And so that's very cool, the use for what we recycle to be put back out there or to be reused. So that's very important. I know we didn't sign the proclamation up, that's true.
Pardon?
Proclamation.
You want the proclamation? You're crazy, boy. Do we have the proclamation?
We do.
Would you like to take it with you?
Oh, it doesn't matter. You know, I talk so much that sometimes, I wasn't sure whether you all approved that proclamation or not.
We did approve it.
Okay. Okay, well, that.
We'll need to get a copy of this where you take it, Joyce. Now, man is getting a close-up, so you have to smile a little better. All right. Thank you, Joyce, for what you do.
Thanks, Don.
We appreciate it.
You're everywhere, you waste, I don't know how you do it.
It's fun. I love this commission, thank you all.
Let's take a little five-minute recess so Joyce can gather her bags.
Yeah, I gotta get to City Hall.
Are you taking it down to City Hall?
I'm gonna leave.
Those aren't really cigarette butts, are they?
No, they're not. They're gonna make that stop. Oh, okay.
Okay, our next scheduled appointment's ten fifteen, so we have about fifteen minutes. So we will go down through some of our other items and take care of them while we're waiting. First is letter of support for Region Seven Planning Development Council for a Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery, or also known as TIGER, grant to rehabilitate of the Appalachian Ohio Railroad. This is a grant that Region Seven wrote in conjunction with the Appalachian Ohio Railroad and didn't make the first round of funding. And the, so they're applying again and just asking for a letter of support from all the counties in Region Seven to go in with the grant documentation, which was due last Friday. So we need to go ahead and approve this letter of support, an official act of the Upshur County Commission. Any questions on this? Not unasked for a motion, that we approve the letter of support.
This is for transportation of coal, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's to help upgrade the railroad system. Basically, they're saying that it's not economically feasible to haul the coal by trucks. And that even though A and O is contributing to this, it's, they're requesting for some federal money to help upgrade the rail system to help provide immediate jobs and also long-term jobs as far as, it's kinda like the gas wells. If you don't have pipelines, if you don't have a place to haul the coal, you, there's not much need to have the coal mines, so.
Well, it's between Grafton and Kala.
Right.
Which serves a lot of coal producers in that area.
That's right.
You see those coal trains every day pass through the canyon.
And I'm sure people would rather see the coal trains than follow behind the coal trucks.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
No same sign, motion carries. Okay.
Cost of the motion, stand.
That's right. Letter to the City of Buchanan concerning the carotene property located at the corner of Tucker and Richie Streets. So it certainly hit the newspapers and certainly in the public eye now, and.
Did receive a call from the City of Buchanan, the mayor. That was a voice message left and indicated that the letter may be unneeded because they have evidently proceeded with action against the property owner at this point. So it's whatever you gentlemen would so desire to do.
Put a hammer on that guy.
It's amazing when the media gets involved, somebody thinks it starts moving a little quicker.
Yeah, it's been two years in the making, and the gentleman called commissioners and the neighbors in that area. Apparently, according to the article in the newspaper, City Council, there was a lot of concern expressed. And, you know, it's definitely something that City Council probably should've dealt with years ago, but, so, well, there's definite action being taken, or is there a continuation of existing action?
According to the voicemail, the action had been.
Has already been taken.
Has been implemented.
Not to pick on this particular property, but I have received calls from various individuals in the community that have similar issues. Of course, refer them to the Safe Structures Board, but to me, I guess it's understandable, but from the time of complaint to the time of resolution often is a large passage of time because of the rules and regulations that have to be followed in order to resolve that, because it is private property, personal property, and a sequence of events have to go into effect. A number of letters to the property owner and followed by inaction on his or her part, followed by more requests, followed by more inaction. And ultimately, to get resolution does take a considerable amount of time. But that is the way the statutes require.
Well, I think that the difference here is that the amount of time it took to get the ball rolling. We all understand, once the ball starts rolling, it takes a certain amount of time to go through all the procedures and legal process. I think the problem here was the amount of time it took to get some action even started in this case. But anyway, hopefully, for the benefit of those, and as I explained to the gentleman who called me, you know, that's in the city and we don't have any control, but we certainly express, since the city is in Upshur County and we do serve the city also, even though the city is an entity of its own, we certainly will express that concern, which we've done. And so we'll, if it's your all's desire, we could, we could wait and see here if something is indeed gonna happen and it's not necessitated to send a letter. Or we could just go ahead and send a letter, which basically is just gonna state our concern, wasn't it, Willie?
Yes. Yeah, the letter just basically states the concern and requires.
Why don't we just go ahead and send a letter?
I think we should send a letter.
And that way, we've done what we told the resident of Buchanan and Upshur County that we would express our concern to the city. So we have a motion to approve that letter and the document. Do we have the letter drafted?
Yes.
Willie for signature?
Mm-hmm.
And all three commissioners sign it? We have a motion to have that effect?
So moved.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
No same sign, motion carries. Okay. We have a request from the West Virginia Strawberry Festival Association Incorporated for the use of the plaza area of the courthouse complex on May the twelfth through the twentieth, two thousand twelve. This is something that's been granted for many, many years for their activities.
In addition, they're requesting, like they have in the past, I didn't list it on the agenda, but it's in their letter that about the picnic tables from the park in the past. We've moved those down, some of those down for them to use.
Okay. So do we have a motion to honor this request in its entirety?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
On favor say aye.
Aye.
No same sign, motion carries. Review approval of budget documentations for information.
I have a one-thirty appointment set up to review with elected officials and department heads if you wanted to go through now and then also or just.
Ah, let's just wait till then if we're gonna do that. We've got a bunch of other things here we need to take a look at. So we spent about ten days working on the budget, so I think we have a pretty in-depth understanding of it.
Just as a point of clarification, pages eleven and twelve, page ten, you've got the correct header information with the fiscal years. I forgot to change that on page eleven and twelve in your column, having current budget and exposed budget. I have it wrong on fiscal years. Those should be eleven, twelve, and twelve and thirteen on those pages.
So just emulate the first page.
Yes, I forgot to cut and paste.
Okay.
And then one of my proofreaders caught a misspelling on a name, I appreciate that. I got Mr. Gooday's name spelled correct on the budget now instead. I have a habit of adding a G, spelling budget, and I put a G in it all the time. Mr. Kimball wasn't polite enough to point that out, so I made that correction.
Good guess, Yuri.
You just earned a free cup of coffee.
Upshur County Ambassador.
That's right. Putting all that training to good use, and we appreciate that. Okay, we have notification from the Division of Justice and Community Service concerning receipt of request for Evoque grant funds of thirty-six thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. We have information on our NACO. Drug, prescription drug. We have for January and February this year.
Savings has been very good there, thirty percent and twenty-four percent. Again, this is a program that is of no expense. It's a cooperative effort by the county association, the National Association of Counties, and the various pharmacies.
Yeah, and anyone that would like to get a card, they're free to get and free to use. And all you do when you get your prescription, you hand them the card, and they'll automatically give you the discount, and it doesn't cost you anything to do it, so. give you the discount, and it doesn't cost you anything to do it, so.
Someone at the library, or with cards available at the library now, and I was advised at a board meeting lately that someone's mother went into the, to get a prescription filled and used that card as better in terms of discount than her regular program. She had insurance there, so it might help some people.
Right. And if you have a card, you can just give them both of them and ask which one gives you the best discount. You can't use them both to get double discount, but you can use the one which gets the biggest discount, so. Correspondence concerning a follow-up forum regarding Upshur County Schools Dropout Prevention Program, March 29. Information on that. I think, are you involved in that, Amanda? Not that one. This is, this is, uh... You're invited. Westling College, Denali Wilson Lounge in the Benedum Hall, March 29 from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Upshur County Schools Dropout Prevention, Q and A, follow-up forum. And we have a correspondence for Jan Harper, owner-operator Hair, Nail Express, located on the property, Upshur County Public Library. This is a beauty shop and et cetera that's located there where the county has bought for expansion and parking. And at this point in time, that income from the rental comes to the county commission, and she's in her, she would like to continue using the building, using the, renting the property for her business. So...
It's a temporary building, it's, that location is not on a fixed structure, I think it's a fixed foundation, it's, it is movable, is that correct?
I understand it, yes.
There was a board meeting yesterday that Mr. Fletcher and I attended at the library, and one of the requests, or suggestions that rose from that was in entering a new contract, which expires in May, that we consider making the tenant responsible for maintenance of that building. There should not be much maintenance to it, but we might wanna consider making that a portion of the new lease agreement. I noted you already sent a response relative to the six-month notification, I think that would be good, and I wanna consider that if it's legally possible.
What is, how's that addressed in the, in the rental agreement, original rental agreement as far as the maintenance?
I don't know what the original rental agreement, I'd have to look and see what, what they had with Mr. Phillips.
Yeah, I don't think if the board, the library board members were uncertain, but that was something that was discussed that possibly, if it were not already addressed, could be, could be addressed.
Well, did you assure them that if it did need some work, that we would pay for it and the library wouldn't have to? I'm sure that was a concern.
No, we did not, did not.
I mean, we provide all the maintenance for the library, so I'm sure if there was some issue there...
That was not relevant.
Okay, monthly home confinement report. It's running about $40,000, $45,000 a month on the home confinement. Now, you know, there is, one thing that would be interesting to see, because there is a distinction between home confinement and community corrections. And this, although I'm a major proponent of community corrections, I think we do need to realize that there's a difference between home confinement and community corrections as far as savings to the community, because the vast savings to the community is through the home confinement program, not through community corrections.
Right, because people don't have to go to incarceration.
Right. Now, I think that, I don't think, I know that what community corrections does, it allows those who have the choice to put more people on home confinement because of the programs that are offered through the community corrections, through rehabilitation, those type of things. But we, I think we do need to understand that they are two different programs, and we did realize this $45,000 savings per month before we started the community corrections program.
That is a true savings.
Yeah, that is.
That's a true savings.
Right. Well, actually, it's, this is just the savings in the regional jail, and if they pay $10 a day for the program. So actually, this is just a saving to regional jail. But anyway, it's definitely a good program, and, you know, hopefully those that are in positions are taking advantage of that and utilizing that, because not only does it save the taxpayers, but it provides an opportunity for rehabilitation instead of just incarceration, which has no, very little redeeming value to be in jail.
Well, it can keep families together.
Right.
It can keep a breadwinner in a position to maintain his employment or her employment.
Right, and actually help people deal with their issues.
Correct.
That's the key.
Require counseling and whatnot.
Right. And we have our agendas of the notices of meetings, for youth camp and other meetings. So, well, it's 10:15. We have Mr. Steven Emmlinger, Upshur County 911 Communications Director. Steve? Step right up.
Thank you. How are you today?
Yeah. So you don't, you're not completely settled into the new nest, huh?
No, we're about 80% moved. Essential items are moved, and we still have several things left that we need to move.
But you're dispatching at the new center?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. The first item we have here to talk about is the replacement of the repeater at the French Creek Tower. Why don't you talk about that and what...
There's a radio exists up there that helps the South County fire companies, mainly Banks District. Selbyville even has a hard time hearing it, and it doesn't work as well as the Tomlinsville Tower into Adrian. So currently, it's all that Banks District has to operate off of. And it's an old motorola micro system, and I don't wanna tell you my age, but I sold those radios over 30 years ago, and they haven't, it's antique, is what it is. And the FCCs came out with some regulations that we were going to have to replace it by December 31st anyway. And over the last month or so, we've been getting a lot of interference. They're having a lot of trouble hearing us, and so I had Mr. Ted Beiser go up and look at it. He had installed it as a used radio years ago, and he's been keeping it on the air ever since for us. And he discovered that it's about at the end of its lifespan, and he took another older radio up to temporarily put in his place, and it's got the same issues. It's very difficult for them to hear us. And so we were going to have to replace this radio by December 31st because it's not narrowbandable. And by December 31st this year, all wideband radios have to be narrowbanded. So this radio was so old, it couldn't be narrowbanded, so we were going to have to replace it anyway before the end of the year. And so this has just stepped up that process a little bit there.
We're mandated to replace it by the FCC.
Yes.
Federal Communications Commission.
Yes. So it's important that we replace this so that we will have communications with the South County. Without it, we don't have any.
So we're talking Selbyville, Banks, and Adrian?
Yes. But Adrian, as long as they don't go toward Rock Cave, can hear the Tomlinsville Tower. When they start to call up Rock Cave, then we have to talk to them also on it. So I got a quote from Mr. Beiser, I don't know if you have that in front of you, it's roughly $4,000 is what's gonna cost to replace. See, that is a repeater system, so you have to get a regular lowband radio and also a highband repeater that we key from our tower, we key the repeater, and then it broadcasts on lowband to the fire department. But we had something occur last evening at the LEPC meeting, Dirk Burnside was there, he's the local siren coordinator, and he told us, the state interoperable radio network person, and he said that the Cleveland Mountain site is now available. And we were going to eventually move this radio to the Cleveland Mountain site, because I think that's where DNR is gonna be moving theirs, and the tower won't be available in the future. But this was going to happen probably next year. So what we really wanna do, it's not on the quote, is for two new antennas and two antenna lines, might as well put the new equipment there, because the radio coverage will be much better off at Cleveland Mountain than it is there at the game farm.
So is that available now?
It is available now.
Where that deadline could be met at the end of the year?
Yes, yeah. So the cost for the two new antennas and the antenna lines aren't on that quote, so I'll have to get those additional for you. But that is the equipment that'll be there.
Do you have any idea approximately how much that would be?
Well, the line is about $6 a foot, so it depends how high they put us up, hopefully put us well up the tower, and since we'd be one of the first antennas on the tower, we could pick which corner we would want, and we would want the north corner where we'd get Selbyville, we would get Adrian, and we would get all down in there where we really have problems now. It'd really help.
But there's a tower that's already up? Is there a tower that's already existing there now?
At Cleveland?
Yeah.
They just finished it.
Okay.
Yeah, they just got a report last night that it was...
Pounding on that tower?
Yeah. We could...
Well, the probably thing to do, go ahead and get a, get a good solid quote.
Yeah, so I just need to get an update on the two antennas and the lines.
Because I mean, if that's, that's the best solution, and that's where it's gonna have to eventually go.
And we won't have to worry about it for 10 years at least.
Maybe 13.
Hopefully.
I understand that Randolph County now has radio communication with Pickens Fire Department.
They are, they got permission to go on the tower, and it should be any day now that they go online.
And once that's completed, then we will no longer be toning out the Pickens Department.
True. Yeah, we key off their siren now, because Randolph can't, and we won't need to do that anymore.
Okay.
All right, timeframe on that, Steve?
They just said it would be any day, but I've heard that about the Tomlinsville Tower now for a year, so.
That day will come, just like moving in the new comm center.
Yes.
Okay, we'll get that complete quote on that, and then we can take a look at that. Next item is review of record dispatch procedures.
Yes, I received a notice this week that you're gonna be renewing that or approving it again soon, and I was asked for any comments that I might have to that, and the only thing that I could see is that we might add an inactivity clause, that if a company doesn't take a call for, I don't know, whatever period of time you might want, two or three months, that we might put them in an inactive status. For instance, one of their trucks might go out of service, and they might need to get it repaired. And if it was gonna be two, three weeks, a month, we could understand that, but under the way the rotation system works, we have to call them when their name comes up. And some haven't taken a call for over three months, and it's just a lot of time. When you really need help, then we're trying to call all these people to get wreckers, and no one's answering the phone. It would really help if they had a truck issue or whatever, or a driver issue, that we could temporarily take them off until they restored, you know, could take calls again. That's the only addition that I could see adding, if you could, we consider that.
So they would...
So it's like if a two- or three-month period, they didn't take a call, that we would just put them in an inactive status until they could send us a letter saying, okay, we're back up and running again.
We're ready to take calls now.
Yeah.
We have a new wrecker in town?
We have, Upshur Towing is applying. It's out Alexander Way.
Oh.
And they have applied, and as soon as he gets me one more item, then he'll have all the documentation that he needs.
Public Service Commission has to license them.
He has that already. I just need a medical card for the driver to be sure that he's...
That'll give us two then in the upside and upper beginning?
Yeah. But he's running under Upshur County Towing.
You know, at one point in time, going back several years, most likely there were some concerns, but that seems, regarding the towing schedule and whatnot, but that seems to have been evaded. Not heard any disgruntled...
Haven't heard any myself lately.
Which is positive.
It seems to be working pretty well now, versus years ago. Is Kyver's back in the loop now, they were...
Who was that?
Kyver?
They, I think, took one tow last month. I heard there was some illness problems there, but seems like they're getting back into it.
Yeah, he's finally returned home, he was in rehab some, well.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions about...
You know, the questions on the record dispatch procedures? Okay, considered recommendation from Niall on Director, request from April Smith to change employment status from full-time to part-time. And then we have some other issues there that we may wanna talk about in executive session, but is this, is this something that...
She's running into some family issues. Her mother is very ill, and her father-in-law is very ill, and it's just taking a lot of her time, and she feels that she can't perform full-time service right now for us. And so I...
I recommend, not the interrecommend, maybe the executive session catches the details before we give out too much information.
Okay.
It's just a personal issue that has arisen.
Yeah.
Well, one question I might ask, I know we have another, and it's, it's gonna be restricted to, I think, eight hours a day.
Yes.
And with this part-time, then where's that gonna put us in relationship to our staffing goal as far as, and where we are in that?
We will probably, we hired the three people recently, one full-timer and two part-timers. We'll probably have to adjust one of those part-timers to a full-timer to make up the difference.
Offset, yeah, reductions, okay. Okay, well then, are you asking for an executive session?
If you need any further details.
Well, I think we probably need to, so I'd ask for a motion that we enter an executive session for Russian Code 698, I support.
Same move.
We're discussing the personnel.